Jesus, I don't have a script first. Is that something?
At this time, Monica Brown will speak on...
Can you all this one? Or would you...
Public comment? Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Would you clarify for me if you're not speaking on one of the grievances?
Am I allowed to or not allowed to?
Yes.
You are.
If you are allowed to, if you're going to speak on one of the grievances, but number seven is not one of the grievance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant number, I meant D. And then I meant public comment also number seven. So I may have missed, I put grievance D. Do you see a little D there?
Yes.
And then also, I wanted to speak in the public comments as well, if I'm allowed to.
You have three minutes if you'll come in.
Is that for both? Is that how you do it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, one first comment is that my understanding is that these grievances should be held in open session, which is what I'm requesting, that we do that today in open session unless it's against a specific employee. And there is law according to that, so I'm just hoping that you will allow us to do this in public session, just as you did to Karen Lowry when you did the public censure of her. The second thing that's on my mind is about the voting process that just happened. And I think it's premature to, well, anyway, I think if you haven't supported the district, you would easily have at least 3,000 people show up for voting. You've got 5,000 employees, you incentivize them with a raise, vote for your raise. If you have 3,000 of them show up, with one friend and one family member, you easily have 9,000 if you truly have the support of the community. And then the last thing is I have just recently turned in books to other people that you guys have that are sexually explicit to the tune of 109, 118, 25, given to your AP students, given to your English students, even to your younger students. And I've turned them to the community. And then I've turned them on this this morning. I'm sure somebody who's seen called it lovely. So just want you to know that Who Can It Live did not represent the truth. And people do need to go, they're going to go to the library. Just go online. You can see it. It's not hidden at all. And it's a shame. Another bestiality book is number two. And teachers have been online voting about it and how much they love the series. That's another one. So I'm just reminding you that it's a real deal. And I'm sorry that when this happened a year and a half, two years ago, that you threw the wrong people under the bus. That's the problem. Instead of saying, let's fix this, let's do it, you threw the wrong people under the bus. That's why I'm here today to talk about the unjust censure of Karen Lowry. What a shame and a shambles. That's one. And I'm here to talk about Mr. Glenn, your comments to Mel McGrath, and Mr. Winwood, your comments to Karen about the, how it didn't take a mental giant to turn a light switch on when your own vice principal went into that library with her, spoke to her, and left her in this deeply dark room, which begs the question, how dark was it if one of your sharpest employees, highest paid employees, didn't think to turn a light on for all the people who were in that library that day? So that was a shame and embarrassment. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mark Lowry, regarding agenda item four B.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mark Lowry. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning to the board. I want to reference, actually, your email to me. And I will read some of that. I won't mention the trustee name. It has been nothing but respectful to me. And I have led this board for a year. The board members receiving threats, name-calling, and disrespect by a segment of the population who do not appear to support public schools. I've been coming to these board meetings now for almost two years, real close to two years. I've never heard anybody come up here and say, let's dismantle a public school system. Let's take the public school system down. I've never heard one person say that. So I don't quite think that's right. I think interpretation of people would disagree with how many schools being run, that you find that if somebody wants to tear down the public school system. You regularly have tarnished my wife's reputation. She hates children. She hates school districts. She hates teachers. That is absolutely furthering from the truth. You said I would use several of our board meeting videos, and you appeared to be, meaning me, one of the more aggressive, louder members of that group. I do not apologize for my passion. I've never gone past your blue line. I've never cursed one of you. I've never threatened one of you. In fact, there was a lady standing right here in front of my splashlight in my wife's face, which could have been very harmful. It was another item. Now, one of your officers approached her. You didn't repute that lady for doing such a thing. That truly was a threat. But I've never crossed the blue line, never cursed you. Unlike the trustee that we're going to have an executive session, cursed me, was aggressive towards me, shaking his finger at me. That's aggression. Me having passion and speaking to the board about issues that are bothering me is not aggression. And then you go on. I also agree with the superintendent's assessment of the trustee being the one who walked away and de-escalated the situation when the two of you disagreed, Lowry and the grievance. Clearly, this is a waste of time. You and others have already made their decision on how they're going to rule. I just wanted to have this moment so that the public could hear what actually happened back there. Because you said we were going to have access to recording, and you then did not give it access to the recording. You'll come up with some label mumble jones while we can't. I just want the public to know that a trustee jumped out of his chair, threatened me, cursed me, waved his finger at me, and then bolted out of the room. The public needs to know that same trustee is the same that's been admonishing female trustees on your board.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry.
Don't clap, because that's not true. You addressed me. What's not true there? What's not true there?
Mr. Lowry, your time is...
What's not true there?
Mr. Lowry, your time is...
No, he just addressed and said, I'm sorry. What is, what is not true about that?
Your last statement was not true, Mr. Winwood, he did not curse me. That is not true. And you'll sit down and...
No, go to the recording. He's going to get you the hell out of this room.
Second, second one. Sit down and then we'll do it.
I, I would like to say something. I was back there. Mr. Winwood did curse Mr. Lowry, for the record.
I was back there too, and yes, he did curse him.
Well, if you play the recording.
At this, at this time, your time is well past. Karen Lowry.
Good morning, trustees and superintendents. I have been diligently watching your board meetings, either here in person or on YouTube for months, and networking with my community. I have been appalled at the way that you have treated parents, taxpayers, the public, and even certain board members. This will be the second time since I've been involved that you've scheduled multiple Level III grievance hearings to be heard in private sessions behind closed doors, away from public scrutiny in specially called board meetings at 7:00 a.m. on a weekday. This is improper and possibly illegal. If an employee is named in a complaint, it's the employee's right to have the hearing in the open session or to keep it enclosed. But when the complaint names a trustee or the superintendent, the grievance should be held in open session in the interest of transparency. It is explicitly the public's business, as you are, as you are their elected representatives. Officials should always err on the side of the public interest over their own wish to hibernate deeds. This is clear in the Attorney General's opinion GA-0511. These grievances do not involve a personnel matter, as they are against the board itself, and none ask for anyone to be fired, disciplined, or removed. Secondly, the people bringing the grievances were promised audio recordings of the secretly held hearings last time. Then you went back on your word and refused to provide the recordings later. And someone, without a vote of the board, directed their attorney to ask the AG for an exemption from your duty to provide the record of the evidence presented in the hearing. Lying to and misleading citizens you supposedly serve is wrong. I've also noticed that you pick and choose which special board meetings to broadcast on YouTube or not. This is another violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act. You gladly recorded and broadcasted your sale-of-witch trial of trustee Lowry, but decided not to even record the last, um, the last grievance special hearing on September 11th at 7:00 a.m. This is obvious viewpoint discrimination, another violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Like the legacy media that has a trust rating of 11%, you've presented your skewed narrative to the citizens that all of these people are only up here to cause trouble, instead of the truth, which is that you've regularly violated constitutionally protected rights of citizens to speech, to petition their government for a redress of grievances, or to seek the assistance of their elected representatives without fear of punishment or reprisals. You even have an employee, ironically, a communications assistant specialist, who unilaterally had a citizen removed for asking questions at the sign-in table about the amount of time allotted last time. An employee with no warning. I believe only the president, in order of removal for cause, and only after a warning. These, this is the only time citizens have time to speak, and they should be allowed.
We have one other forum turned in, however, it's incomplete. So we will move on with our other decisions. Back to the...
I have a question.
Yeah.
As a trustee, I can hear that closed session, would you correct from that grievance?
Yes.
Okay.
They did it again.
This includes our public comment?
I have a point of order. I would like to make a move that we take these up in open session, these grievances, unless they otherwise specify that they don't want them to be held in open session.
Texas Open Meetings Act provides that complaints against a district official may be held in closed session under 551074A2, unless the officer or subject of the complaint requests a public hearing. To my knowledge, no one has requested a public hearing.
I heard some of the people come up here specifically request public media and without an attorney consult. I'd like to err on the side of caution and hold the grievances here in public. Because I would like, I would not like, I'm talking. I would not like to break the law or invite unnecessary litigation against the district in the future for breaking the laws. And so I would like the record to show my request that their grievances be heard in public.
Noted, Ms. McGrath. I'll tell you, you consulted with our attorney. And our attorney clearly stated, an attorney that has represented districts in multiple complaints, that because the individual who is being complained against has the right to determine whether it's open or closed, not the person who makes the complaint. And therefore, therefore, they'll be heard in closed session. Unless the board is a corporate, they'll be heard in open session.
So I would like the record to show that I'll be going into closed session in distress, under distress, because I think this is wrong.
My second then.
And I would also like to appeal the, appeal this decision from the chair.
Did you make a motion? I'm unclear on that. There was a second.
There was a motion. I'm agreeing with her, according to... Yes, I want under distress, because this should be out in public unless it is specifically said by who the problem is, that they say, no, I want it in closed.
Okay, so what was the motion? I'm sorry, what was the motion? Could you repeat the motion, Melanie?
The motion is, I move that we take these grievances up in open session.
I have a motion before the board.
No, I have a second.
A second.
Discussion. I believe we should follow the law on this, and when the people who are grieved make that decision for themselves.
Have they spoken up and said they want it in the back? No one has asked, no one has asked for an open session. None of the people who have been grieved against have asked for an open session.
You are those.
Okay. Derek, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of holding the meetings in open session? Show of hands. Opposed, same sign. Let the record show. Four, two, with one absent, Ms. McGrath and Ms. Lowry voting against.
And then at this time, I would like to appeal the decision from the chair. Because I disagree with your decision, decision. So that would, you have to recognize my appeal and take it to the vote.
We took it for a vote, and we will move forward. This, because these grievances are complaints against the district official, and this board has voted to hear them in closed session pursuant to Government Code, section 551074. Unless the district official against whom the complaint has filed a request to hold it in open session, none of the officials have asked for it to be held in, uh, in open session. To your knowledge, Dr. Glenn?
That is, that is correct.
I do believe that Mr. Daniels wanted his, he wanted his to be held in open session.
Uh, Ms. McGrath, you're talking about the grievance. The person against whom they're grieving, if they are a public official, they have the right. So if the grievance is with you, you have the right to hold it in open or closed session. However, if the grievance is, uh, he is the grievance, not the one against whom you're grieving. At this time, we will adjourn in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551074. No vote will be taken in closed session, and we will return to open session after the hearing to take any action, any... The time is...
They prevented him from...
Seven, eight, ten.
No, I know. So it says, yes, I know. Preventing people from speaking. This is the third time Todd Daniels has been prevented from speaking.
So this is the third time in a row I have not been allowed to speak in a meeting after signup. My grievance is about that. So I don't know what else to say about that, but...
And they're saying your forms are incomplete, that little paper?
Yeah, because I...
Because he put that on file for address.
They have my address.
Because he doesn't want to write it down every time.
Because I filed a grievance. I'm on the agenda.
Which makes a lot of people uncomfortable, the whole idea of putting your address in.
Well, I don't want them burning crosses on my yard.
Right, I understand.
So...
Even Stansby says that your address is voluntary information. They cannot stop people from speaking.
So that's their point of saying he didn't write his address?
And they have his address.
On, on record.
Well, they have my address on the grievance, and I'm listed on the agenda as a grievance. So, and I signed up. They have my address.
So if you don't write it down again, they're not letting you speak on that point.
Well, Ms. Harrington is, is doing that.
Tell what happened the first two times.
The first time, they didn't even have, they didn't even have on the agenda, speaking before the...
You're saying it should have been held in open session?
No. My grievance is against the board.
Minus two.
She's part of the board. They, they're misinterpreting the law, first of all, to, to the... But, and they, and Ms., Dr. Harrington actually said that, you know, if you were being grieved against, you could ask for it to be... Well, she is being grieved against. She's part of the board.
True.
She may have voted against it, but that doesn't change the fact that she's part of that board.
Right. So they wouldn't let him go in?
Do you know if this meeting has been live streamed?
I forgot.
About, now, I can't find it.
It's, I'm not sure if it was.
No, it's not been live streamed, just like last time. We might be next. No, not as next. I'm sorry. Just letting you know, just... Got water if you need it.
Is she coming in with us?
Hmm, I think so. We're talking.
They say he's not with Mr. Daniels.
He didn't, he didn't, I guess he didn't register.
They did very much pressure.
Yeah, he could have. He has a grand, he has a grandparent.
He has a grandparent. So he probably couldn't have gone out to Karen County.
No, his address was changed before that. He's had that for... Well, he told him he was going to register to vote. That was the last day, so maybe he was the day later.
I don't, I don't know what happened.
Well, he thought he was registered.
Did what?
Up in Gladys.
Well, he doesn't live there anymore, so we can't go up there.
Well, if he came, that's one. Wherever you can vote, wherever you're registered to vote. On the 10th of October. He doesn't live there anymore. I tell you, I...
That's what the law says.
I tell you, remember, I lived here for five years. He's moved all the way. He was getting absentee ballots mailed to him from Illinois. And here for the last president.
Probably even after you registered here.
Oh, yeah, he was registered. And he, he, you get ballots wherever you're registered.
They don't, they don't clear those out immediately, because I have work right now, so it's...
They're cleared out now, but for the purposes of the last...
Maybe here, but in some other places. There was literally like dogs that were malefied.
Well, we, we could, but still can't.
Because usually they, they didn't, they didn't go in until close.
Can't.
Do they kick it out? Sort of like, they're not going to let me go in as, as...
They say you're not with Mr. Daniels, they wouldn't let him go in.
You know what?
They told him, he's not with Mr. Daniels, because I am with Mr. Daniels, they wouldn't let him go in.
So what, you have to arrive with somebody to be able to go in there?
I don't know. I don't know. That was just what was then.
Just do whatever they want.
Yeah, but you're on, you're on our, you're on our grievance.
Oh, we had families engaged, and Todd was going to go in with you.
Yeah. And maybe you better be able to.
They could have voted to Karen, but I think, I didn't understand if he wanted to vote. That's what, that was all the point. Who's who puts. I'm unclear. The point is, is he has the votes that he wanted.
Well, you know, it should be, because there's a bunch of people that's on, that shouldn't.
Does it feel better here? Brought you a bag of stuff you need to catch your... Treat it when you get there.
Daddy's best.
Yeah. So, the way yours is forty, I don't know if they're counting all P, which is one.
Which is, there's all three grievances.
They all do.
So I know, filed. There's also, there, there actually should be one for Monica Brown.
Yeah, there should be. So maybe not, maybe that's...
You should have been allowed to.
Separate, yeah.
Going in separately, without, without me. You did a grievance for just Monica Brown.
Okay.
Then you did two for Jim and Monica Brown.
Okay, so, maybe.
What are they doing there? Does anyone, adults, what they doing here? Will you just sit there and look smart?
It looks like... Okay, yeah, it's hard to tell.
This was such a nice coat. I'm not going like this, it's just like, it's a little warm in here, but...
Do they pack you a hold this for me, or can we come go for something? It's got key glamato. Do you want anything for water?
Nice to know something remained consistent.
Yes, sir.
It's nice to know things remain consistent, even if they're consistently wrong.
You're next on the agenda.
Tired yet? Okay.
I noticed that he was going to go around his phone. By just saying, they're, they're consistent.
Do you want to try this on? I think they're coffee, I think.
Did you, go ahead. Did you make the email? I'm not sure whose email it was, that, that I got. And people that, that it was giving advice on how we should handle ourselves, and how these grievances should be handled in the day. I thought it was interesting that whoever's email that was, I'm not sure who that person was. It indicated that we further grievances were a waste of time. And, of course, coming to the board meeting and talking for one minute is, is a waste of time, too.
Yeah.
I'm not, as a social media person, but we're gonna have to get some people who are to take this little part every day on social media. But, my son says, if you really want, if these people stand up and say, we have potential to sign a show after job.
Angela Stencher.
And school activities, and everywhere they go, they're there with potential. I'm surprised. The beauty show. People, people. Where they are, they're meant to be at the news. I don't know.
First thing he asks, you're not a client.
Do you like going to closed session?
Do you have a grievance I can read through? Just a brief back, familiar again.
Todd, do you have anything to say? Um, I'm a little flustered right now, and, just frustrating. Um, I'm like, how do we, I'm thinking this is what it is, and I don't know what's going on. You know, the, the session, that's, you know, not allowing us to, yeah, let's start off with a meeting. I'll say right there.
Yeah.
She said, well, you didn't fill out your form right.
They want your address on the form?
Yeah, my, my address is on, on file with the district, because I filed, I filled out a grievance, and so my address is already there, so they have my address. They're using a, to, to inhibit my personal, to address that.
And even tabs be satisfied, you can, well, districts can ask for an address, but it's completely voluntary. Whether the citizen gets it or not. And they're restricting people being able to speak, or free customer around, based on something that's not correct.
Thank you. What they're doing is, I find in the Attorney General's G A five one one.
Five zero one.
Zero five one one.
How was their time?
They're using, um, the Texas Open Meetings Act, and the executive, and the position. To suppress, um, the evidence and the public information, the Texas public information. So, they're all over the place, that, you know, there's a, I mean, this, this explains exactly the tactic that they're, they're using. They're using, supposedly, first of all, their, their agendas are vague, they don't tell you who the grievances are, or who the plaintiffs are, you know, who the defendants and plaintiffs are in the grievance, but they say that...
They tell you the plaintiffs.
They say that, according to Texas Government Code, five, five, one, zero, seven, four, personnel matters can necessitate a closed meeting. What they don't tell you, uh, it, it, you know, it, it does not apply if the officer or employee is subject to deliberation, request the public here. So, for example, in Mr. Poe's grievance that I represented, um, he mentioned Barbara Harrington made a wrong action in the meeting, and took a vote to censure, um, you know, um, and so, on that basis, she said, well, I was named, and I want to have it in closed session. But, in, in other grievances today, and in my grievance, you know, it's against the body corporate for mismanagement of their, their meetings, uh, and offenses, and so, it's plural, it's plural, it's not one person, and the, and the relief I'm requesting is, is not to fire anyone. So, so this thing about being an employee or personnel matter, dismissal of a public officer or employee, um, that's not the case. That's not the case.
It's a teacher or a librarian.
I'm not asking, I, I didn't, I asked them to correct their mistake, and to acknowledge their mistake. I didn't ask them to fire Dr. Glenn, or to fire a police officer, or, I didn't ask them to do anything with an employee, but they're still using that to take, this one little clause out of, out of context, to take it into executive session. And then, they know that they're supposed to provide evidence and recordings of, of those, but what they do is, after the, after the grievance is over, uh, and they, they flushed you.
After they promised.
And after they promised, well, they have to, um, by law, they're supposed to. Uh, then, then they pay an attorney in Austin to write a letter to the A G, uh, with very vague narrative that says, hey, we were in executive session, and so, that's privileged. Well, that's fine, it's a delay game, because if we appeal at the T E A, the law states clearly that the T E A will, will and is going to get that recording, that's the only evidence, they've escalated it to level three. There, there wasn't any evidentiary hearing in level one, level two, they just escalated because it was about a board matter.
And so they can put it in there.
And so they can, and, and so they can use this one clause to put it in, in executive session. And then subsequently, what they'll do, even though the board doesn't vote to do that, somebody, either Barbara Harrington, or, or Dr. Glenn, hires the attorney in Austin to write a letter to the A G, to say, hey, we were in executive session, so we should, we shouldn't have to release this information. And all that does is delay everything. It means, I don't have a recording of all the evidence of the grievance to go on appeal with the T E A, or I don't have all the evidence of the grievance to go to a district court, and then send them a writ of mandamus, and, and sue them. So, it just delays things, and, but that's the tactic that they, they, they want to use. Yeah.
Anything else?
Probably a lot, but I can't think of it right now.
Did you say this? I'm sorry, go ahead. This is the third time you haven't been able to speak, and you've written...
This is the third time.
Excuse me, but, because they require you to put down name and address, but you put down that it was on file, is that right?
I put it was on file.
So they have a record of your address?
Yeah.
But because you didn't rewrite it down, is that the complaint?
Because I didn't, I, because I put on file rather than my address.
Right.
And, um, you're not required to reveal your address, and this, actually, there's, there's statute that says an employee, you don't, you, you can't mention their address, so, like, this assistant superintendent over here, if I stood up in public and said, yeah, I know where you live.
Right.
I know where you live over there, if I did that, I...
You'd be out of order.
I'd be out of order, right? And so they protect, they protect, they protect employees, they protect these people.
Right.
But the public, they expect the public to come here, state their address, so anybody that watches YouTube livestream, or is actually here.
Right.
Uh, you know, who knows what, what they'll do?
Sure.
They can take retaliation.
We've had people come to our house over the address.
So, I, I don't need...
While children were home alone.
I don't have to state my address publicly.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're inconsistent in, 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 in that also.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't have to state my address publicly, so they can come burn crosses on my yard.
Right.
I don't have to do that.
Right, I understand, I understand. And if it's on file, it should be suffice, suffice?
It is, they have, they know. I, I'm on the agenda.
Right.
I'm on the agenda, I, I'm invited here.
Right.
I'm invited here to, to present a grievance, so, on that grievance, they have my address. But, because of the sign up form, and because she doesn't want, she doesn't want to hear from me.
Right.
This is the third time.
Right. And last time you were asked to leave, right?
Uh, yeah, last time, the, uh...
Communications director.
Yeah, the, the community communications director, um, took umbrage with me asking how much time we're gonna be allowed for agenda speaking, or for public speaking, and, and she, she asked the officer over, right here, over here, to, uh, to escort me out, he was asleep at the door, and then he said, oh, okay, and then he, he said, well, I said, why are you doing this? He said, well, because I have no reason to doubt her, you know, so...
Well, and, I know in times they've let us speak, five minutes, now to three minutes, now one minute. And then sometimes, sometimes they've let other people speak on agenda items, as well as public comments, that was one time. And now, that's why I was asking for myself, could I speak?
I signed up for both.
Right, I did too, because in the past, they let other people do that, Paula McDonald was one of them, and there were several. They got to speak twice in an evening, and then the rest of us weren't aware that you could do that. And not that we want to speak twice, but there's enough to talk about, that sometimes there is a second comment that needs to be made, but they're not, they're not doing that. I don't think that's what they're doing today, just like she's told me multiple times, you get to speak on anything you want to talk about, in this little timeframe, you can't speak again.
Yeah.
But that wasn't the case with several other people that got to speak about board, board meetings ago, where they got to speak twice.
Two meetings ago, the agenda was wrong, and that was what I was gonna speak to, they have the agenda, but they don't have any speaking to the agenda. So they voted on the agenda items, and then they said, then, it wasn't on the agenda, but they said, oh yeah, we're gonna put some speakers at the end.
Right.
Right? Um, but, and those were speakers to the agenda. Well, the whole thing is, we speak either during the, the consideration, or before the agenda, so that supposedly, uh, they take our input.
During or before they vote.
Right.
They take our input.
So they take your input? That's the point of it?
Yeah, they get the point of it. So, if they vote, if they vote on something, and they say, now you can talk about it, well, they've already decided, you know? They've already decided, and, and they've decided that they don't care about what you have to say.
Right.
And, you know, it's against the law, again.
Right.
Well, and just to give some contrast, Fort Worth I S D, who is an extremely corrupt board, and, uh, even they, they follow their agendas, they, they, well, they have, they have, um, at certain times, well, they've drug people out of there, but, wrongly. But, they do, they do let you speak, and the point I was gonna make is that, you know how much time you're gonna have, because if it's less than twenty speakers, you get, um, I, I believe it's three minutes now, if it's more than twenty speakers, you get two minutes.
Okay.
It used to be one, but, um, somebody made a grievance about it, and they, they upped it to two.
Went back to two, yeah.
They upped it to two minutes. Um, but, when you call to sign up, you can say, what number am I, so you can have a good idea of whether you're gonna have two or three minutes.
Okay.
Because, you know, you're writing your speech, you're trying to get it all in.
Right.
If you write a three minute speech, and you get there and only have two minutes, it kind of...
It's a, yes, I understand.
But, I asked her when I came in, how long we were gonna have to speak, and she said, I don't know, it's gonna be up to her, whatever she decides.
Right, and that's true, that's how it's been.
Yeah. So...
Okay.
Um, people were asking on the place, what the grievances are about, and the grievances are about, and, what would you say, the grievances are about?
I, I don't even know, I only know about yes. I, I don't even know, I only know about this. Do I know what Mr. Poe's, Poe's is about? Because I read it last night.
Was it about the?
It is, um, I forget now.
It was about them, the, you censure.
Mom was about unjust censure and also about, um, the conduct of the two, Jeremy and also Bill. But as far as I've, I've got three. And so I don't know the way they listed it. And what they do with me is they say, well, you have one shot, here's your ten minutes for all of it.
You have three different grievances? All in one ten minutes?
Well, I don't know, no one ever told me. They just said I could be here today, you know, six, eight weeks ago, they said today's the day. Oh, thanks. So, the way it's worded on the agenda, I really don't know what's gonna happen. Just, um, but.
Are you on Facebook Live?
Because they're not recording it, this is another board meeting that's not being recorded for the public.
I wanted to make one more point is that, um, grievances that happen at Fort Worth I S D that are against the board or the superintendent or whatever, they've always, as far as I know, for the last several years, have been held in open session. There was never a question about, we're gonna try to force you into closed session.
Right.
Not once.
Right.
There have been some in closed session, but it was because it was an employee's grievance against the district and they chose to have it in closed session. There was an employee that had a grievance though that had hers in open session.
She wanted it all wide open.
And actually the ones, uh, that were in closed session, like, I don't even know, it was the employee against the school or the school against the employee, I'm not really sure. But, but yeah, and they're held at the end of a meeting and, uh, the public, you know, it's broadcast on YouTube.
Right, right, so there's transparency. Sit right here.
Craig Mayberry? Is Craig Mayberry here?
He can make it.
Ten minutes. No one. Engaged, they don't engage with Monica to talk to you, but they just.
She's gonna talk to him.
Answer the questions that there is. Do what?
Uh, I think I'm up there. But I'm leaving, I'm here for somebody else.
They're recording, but they're not letting us record.
Do you want to speak about your grievance? On YouTube, I mean on Facebook?
Yeah, then I'm on social media.
Well, I don't have to put your face on here, but do you want to talk about it, what happened?
I don't know what good it'd do.
Well, I know it's, I know it doesn't do any good. I mean, I know they're not gonna do anything, but I, I mean, I think people should know what they're doing back there.
They're shutting it down, that's what they're doing. You can't record. Um, yeah.
Okay. I gotta make, I gotta make sure they're calling her next.
Who, who they call?
I gotta make sure they're calling her.
We can talk, we can talk later. Yeah, so they, they, they call you in, they tell you, you can't record. I'm gonna recite law where you can't record. She then says that she didn't tell us we could get access to it last time, we can make a request.
Which is an utter lie.
Which was not true.
Right.
They, they say they're not gonna respond to you, but yet both Harrington and Wimberly wanted to engage in conversation back and forth, telling their side of the story.
Right, of course, just like during public comments.
Yeah.
I've seen, I've seen both of, I've seen her and Glenn interrupt multiple people, multiple times.
Yeah, they'll do it when it serves their purpose, but they do, the effort here is to silence the public. Put this behind closed doors where nobody in the public can hear. You're never gonna get a recording of this. They do it at seven A M., so public, most public don't even know about this, even the ones that still want to come at the board meetings.
Right.
So it's, um, you know, mine was the fact that, trustee Wimberly became aggressive at me in the last meeting. They deny that happened, the ones that were there. The ones that were there that's, you know, have a different story is obviously trustee Lowery, trustee, uh, Graft.
Didn't he also make a motion?
He, he took a step towards me and wagged his finger and then bolted out of the room.
But didn't he, didn't he make some sort of, like, I, I'm, I think we should all just do this back there? Some kind of motion and you can't make a motion in, in executive session.
I don't recall that, cause with, you know, they have you leave.
Maybe that was somebody else's grievance I heard about.
Told me to leave. You get ten minutes. You know, typically from what I hear, you get twenty minutes.
Is it ten minutes each side?
Just ten minutes.
Oh, and then they don't?
No, they never, they, the only time they, she wanted to clarify her position on vouchers. So she wants to engage and try to tell her side of the story on vouchers.
What does that have to do with it?
It, it does have nothing, what I said is that in her email, she, she said people are coming up and speaking negatively about the public school system.
Right.
Well, I've not, I've been coming two years.
That's just a narrative. That's just some fake narrative they're putting out there.
I've not heard anybody say that.
Right.
We need a good public school system.
Everybody I know that knows what knows is, is against vouchers because it's not a good deal.
Yeah, I, it's too early for me to take the position on vouchers because they haven't defined what it looks like.
Yeah. Yeah, the bills are, are not good at all.
Do I?
The bills are not good and also, um, if they did do them, there's very few vouchers available. Like hardly anybody's gonna get them and then the government gets their hooks into all those private homeschools.
So, I, I don't, I don't know what the voucher system is gonna look like. So it's, it, I can't make a decision on something I don't have good understanding what it's all about. So, she wanted to take her position on vouchers. I was commenting on the fact that, uh, her email says that, you know, people are against the public school systems. I've not heard that. And they keep telling, my wife doesn't like teachers, doesn't like children, doesn't like the, you know, school system, that's not true.
Right, I know.
And as I shared with them, when she had one on one with teachers or a small group, they ended up walking away like her, cause she's a nice lady, she cares. But they put it out, yeah, that, that she's, uh, I don't understand. This is just the government, it, it's just like the national level. This is another government agency controlled by bureaucrats that are in charge of our lives and our tax dollars and they don't want to hear from you, they don't want to hear from me. And unfortunately, the vast majority of people aren't paying attention.
Do you want to talk about what your previous, uh, you know, your previous life job was and how, why you would know these things?
Well.
You don't have to.
Most of, I mean, I did thirty-five years on, thirty of it the federal side. So I know a little bit about, you know, um, laws, government, how governments should work. It's, it's dis- distressing to me to see how our government agencies have become. And this is just a local, a local, uh, example of that. Happy minded bureaucrats.
Yeah. So. Something, something I just found out was that all of these school marshals that are in here, they're not sworn officers. So, it's like a.
They're marshals.
They're not sworn to the Constitution. Uh, Mike just asked them.
Okay.
They're not sworn officers, so it's like a personal, like, security force for G I S D.
Well.
They're not armed.
Yeah, so the way it works is you have, um, school resource officers who in this case would be like Granbury or, or Hood County sheriffs with a memorandum of understanding and they would work as T C O certified law enforcement officers for Granbury.
And, and they're sworn to uphold the Constitution?
Or you would have the Granbury Independent School District Police Department. Again, T C O certified and they would be their own police department. And then you have what's called the school marshals.
But we don't have a Granbury I S D police department.
No, so your next level down.
We don't want one either.
No, is, is the school marshals and that's what these gentlemen are. They go to like eighty hours of training. I like the marshal program, I'm not for the guardian program, which is even the lower level where they arm administrators, teachers, et cetera.
But I'm just pointing out, if you're not a sworn officer, then you don't have to, you haven't sworn to uphold the Constitution. So it's like you're at the beck and call of the people up here on the dais, if they want you out or, you know, say you're out of line, you're out of here and.
Well, and they're T, they're T C O certified to be school marshals, Texas School Safety Center. Now whether they have to swear to the Con- you know, uphold the Constitution, I, I don't know if they, they do that or not. Sounds like if, if you ask and you say no.
I mean, they haven't sworn an oath.
Yeah.
So, they may have in another, um, you know, a different part of their life that doesn't have to do with this.
Yeah, some of these guys, uh, were T C O, uh, real peace officers in the state of Texas. I know that.
Yeah.
Uh, some of them are still carry their commissions with this, like a smaller department somewhere and then they do this.
I find it interesting that they have one, two, three, four, six of them here? And we have, um,
Well.
I don't know, a few people.
Yeah, but they, they.
Ten?
They had to try to anticipate and, and this has been a, this has been a contentious year here. I, I have no problem with security. I have no problem.
I just have a problem with somebody being taken out at the direction of an employee for asking questions.
I wasn't there to see that, but that, uh, would be deserving.
Yeah. Have you gone back?
Uh, no.
No.
Please, please go ahead.
Do you want this back or?
Sure, I'll hold it for a while. Good, that's good, that's good. I mean, he's, he's been a tripper through all this. And, you know, his wife is a public servant who, who has, uh, had some pretty serious. Well, anyway, she's been darned in the best of ways and she's also been bullied in a big way.
Yeah, I'm kind of embarrassed.
I know. I don't, nobody wants to be on it, I understand. Nobody wants to be doing all this, talking about it. But unfortunately, a lot of it's moral. And it has to do with our Constitution.
So do you have to put these people around, should I sit down here? I can't see her.
I don't know why, but the other sister's different.
Right.
And it's like, well, you know, she's the leader of student services, they didn't call her the head of the library, but that's what she does too, in addition. So her title is something called Student Services Coordinator. The resources, you know, the books and stuff, the libraries and other things too. Let's see. This one here is Director of Communications, who is trying to get the next year in video until, in the upcoming.
Yeah, so what I said in my public comment is, they can't pick and choose which board meetings to livestream or which ones to not livestream.
Right.
You know, they, they put out the ones they want the public to see, but hide the ones they don't.
Yeah, nine eleven was a really bad one.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's on the way, everything's good. Well, I mean, I mean, I made a comparison, did we get in? She F T's?
There might be someone else.
She said mom never got back with her.
Yeah, just her and Mrs. Trump. I'll figure that out, I'll, I'll figure out what happened twice. It's okay.
But I, I did tell Victoria to, if she. So. Could have been. Monica Brown.
Can we, can we get through this?
Yes.
Come on.
Ha, thanks. Yes. Yes, please.
I wonder if they're gonna kick you out.
Thank you.
You can give a feel of his stare down and stuff. It's like, why would he want to poke there? He's got an oath. I had bad people threatened. And in my face. If he thinks he's a coward. He's not stable. Here. Excellent. Well, I know, I know my wife's story is gonna take a step back, we will figure out what next. Because all they do is beat him up. They don't lie, it's about. They don't even, Carol sent him an email, her, they won't even reply. So, uh, they don't need a sticker to sponsor a thing. They've got to find, or before that time, they've voted away. They don't even count, according to the case. Yeah. They burned down the sticker. She sent us up for a gift for you, actually during the COVID. She turned it to her husband, she lies, out of favor. Well, they, it's up to you. They come to us with their stickers. That's every little box, three boxes, the last one. Yes. Sorry, quit beating myself up. Yeah. No. Cooked up ice cream, all the goodies, the D back over. And I do hear about the D back, and we don't have to go down the road. So work out for us. And it'll come, Justin, your... Well, it's cool. We're working on the customs team there, and, uh, so, everybody wanted to be my friend. We had access to be able to squeeze people off some budget, we had the space A. Well, yeah, places quicker. Took care of me after that. They seen me coming through the line. They were coming, quick, quick, quick. Well, you're the son of a... Before I had any personal issues with radio in her car. Personal issues, again, in the late eighties. And I made a stunt. By the guy who looks up to me. I walked up, I'm talking to my kid, his... My society, and I'm explaining to him what I saw on the phone, your rights are... And, uh, he was having some trouble finding his... Registration and insurance paperwork, it's taking a couple minutes. I hear a siren. And, uh, I'm wondering what the hell's wrong with me, he's fine. Sirens get louder and louder and louder. I didn't know what I knew. I look at his ID card. Who's the base commander? The sirens are just trying to get there and tell me to let him go. So, general, sorry, I didn't realize it. You're fine, you're fine. General, sorry, I'm sorry, they're trying to call. It was so... Discipline, he was... He should have been doing it earlier. I said, you never... Sometimes it's just... I'm sweating, it's like, so... What do you mean, you don't have the radio? The radios were true, so... That kind of stuff happens in our... Sweating, I heard it happen. I'm tired, commander. Tell him how you said, make sure he's standing on some kernels. Also, I have to go to the process. But I have to do this, so I have a common... Back porch area, separate from the... And, uh, I'm taking the... And was, there was all... One of my teachers, I was speaking to the... And the person in there was... He said... That bear on the back porch is current. He was like, that's right, that's right, you're referencing. Ask me about this. This is how to do that, you know. How did you make it, turns out? Aren't you more electrocuted? Yes, sir. D three, and, um, starting on the kernels. One of your bull forces over here. In one of the total ones. Seventy-four, seventy-four. And then, as I change the command. Sorry, Bill. And said... Everybody, you might have had one of them. There anymore, second. Yeah, there is. Yeah, fair, right there. There's supposed to be.
So you're not our friend, I think.
Yeah, I have to do, to get a... I have a situation about...
Exactly.
Did we see where everybody was?
Yeah. Yes. Where's your surroundings?
So what do we...
Yes. So, as last, they had to bring, yeah, the reds, and then they're like... Only it's a minor, I'm gonna do that.
It was, uh, it was...
Always being covered. I get...
See, those things get a lot more work.
I certainly agree.
But I think that's constantly... Sam, could you...
Yeah.
Or if someone's going to ask for a...
Yeah.
Enjoy your day.
Bye. I just talked to him now, so...
Get it by up to a turn station. I'm testing your, say, you what you're doing.
Yeah.
Don't be terrible.
Well, I'm asking this today.
They need it.
No, sir.
Think I'll depend on up at the PX shop. We were taking, taking... So, had a girl come through the gate. And, and everybody, and so they called us. The name that she was given, Kim, no record found on her. So they called us, and I showed up there. By the time I get there, she's already been there for a while. And, uh, the doctor wrote down her information, well, information to give you was different than the information that she was here for. And, uh... I remember getting there. Right about that time, we're just banging, coming from the truck. Give me that. Told her, so you stand right here, we better down real quick.
Bettering...
She was trying to sneak him back in. So what, and that's... It was like a month before graduation. Did you know they... And, uh, tell us. Do you hear stupid? Look, care to work, man? Look, something down here, I'm sure. He doesn't have an ID card. They had to be by hospital. So let you... Got notified, office command, who's gonna notify you. What's five? There was... How do you get a handle on ours? We can't be, you know, with your permission. Get a load of whatever happened to him, but... So, I just said, we're happy. And, reason she had to have her eye closed on her. That one's a little bit more people. She could be into her own... Or we could be, maybe they have that all day. And that's why, at that point, I could let her go away, because if you're suspended or something like that, maybe you're under guard, go for a ride. Because I couldn't really let you correct her first. You know, if you get a... And I suffered, I needed to... That's one thing, if you're busy, I always see everyone pull in that part. Sure, it is. Unless you're talking, I'm like, two feet. I, I didn't turn to him. I didn't realize that.
But I can...
I'm surprised that you're all...
Hold it, hold it, someone else... Last day, she was not just... Said it's a... Because you're not even... Yeah, I could wait until the end. So, but I kind of just, oh, I'm like, he said, I think I'm just gonna quote myself. I already think I'm...
Right now. Five hundred sixty-five, three miles. What did it, um, just like... Fifty miles, forty-five, sixty thousand six. That'd be a... And, uh...
I guess this is the main thing, was we turned in three grievances and we are aggrieved. We've been involved in this for about a year and a half, I think going on two years now. And, um, it's a moral issue, that's the only reason why we're still here. The, as, as I posted on Facebook the other day, the wrong people are being thrown under the bus. When this whole process started, it was clearly documented that staff, uh, from Stacy Brown, being the lead of curriculum, and several other staff members that were present on the Board of Book Review Committee, were hand over fist putting immoral books back. So then, one of my grievances today was about the unjust censure of Karen Lowry, because she was in the library because of the garbage books, and they still have them. You can go to their website right now, and if you need direction, I can show you what to see. But, um, they still have bestiality books, they still have sexually explicit books, and they have them to the tune of a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and nine, twenty-five copies, that educators in this city are standing by to say it's okay, and Karen stood up, that's why she was elected. And she's been thrown under the bus, she was shamefully treated in that censure. So that was one of our grievances, and we just wanted to deeply express how grief we are about the moral... I'm not sure what the word is, but the moral, lack of morals that are going on as relates to children, uh, truly violating minor law as related to minors. Um, the second grievance was about when Dartrick Lynn was so disparaging, disparaging and rude to Melanie Graff at one of these board meetings. Um, he has been mimicked all over the city, people are making T-shirts based on his wording that he could have just retracted and said, hey, you know what, I'm sorry, because he violated teacher's code of ethics, he violated board policy related to ethics. He violated, violated just general ethical behavior toward colleagues. So he did that, and then the other grievance that we did was Billy Wimberly, who is an Eagle Scout and involved in the community in a lot of ways and has served a lot. He's also a volunteer fireman. He's been deeply disappointing, because the very first thing he did as a trustee was come out and write a letter in the Hood County News, uh, disparaging Melanie Graff and Karen. He called them, uh, left-wing progressives, he said they serve a different master. I mean, his letter was, looked like it was written, it was evil.
I remember reading that.
It was terrible, and it was libel, and nobody sued him, which was to their credit, they didn't sue him for that, but they could've. And then since then, when he spoke to Mrs. Lowry, he said it didn't take a mental giant to know to turn on the library light, but what he didn't mention was the vice principal was in that library with her, along with people who were already in the room before she ever got there, and no one turned a light on, including the people who run the place.
Because it was bright enough.
Because it was bright enough. But that same vice principal claimed that it was dark. Well, God bless them all, they threw her under the bus, she called ahead, there's documentation of that. The whole way it was done was just like a lynching over someone as a trustee visiting a school library, which is what she was elected to do. And I just applaud her, and I hope that she'll go visit the others, and you don't even have to visit them, you can go online and start searching. And you need to look at the class readers, you need to look at the lit circle, you need to look at textbooks that are in, listed in the library, there's several ones called Beloved, and it has bestiality in it. And they had a whole series called Moss Books, that teachers have been since gloating over how much they love that series. Again, it's bestiality, I don't care if it's fiction or not, it is. And... I understand that who, the lady who was saying that is a Christian and says she is, but it doesn't line up with Christian values to claim that that's an excellent, good book to love. Um, maybe find it interesting, maybe find it engaging, but, um, if I had a student who came to me and said, Mrs. Brown, I am reading this book, and I start reading it, and I find out it's rated R or pornographic, the first thing I would do is end the discussion, then I would talk to the parent, and I would get everything turned back to whatever our topic is for the day as an educator. Wouldn't promote it and gloat over it. So I don't understand why we have like a cognitive dissonance going on with people on morals and values, but if you read the teacher's code of ethics, they really aren't supposed to talk sexuality with kids at all. Nothing about it. If there's Shaq policy, very clear, it's beautiful policy, there's a policy called EHAA, which, to my knowledge, most of the people here didn't even know what it was, but it is the accreditation policy for the school district, and it's all over Texas, it's not just here. It's fabulous, and it's written from the top down, and it tells what you're supposed to do to make a great school district, and if they do, it'll be phenomenal. It'll be, they can build on everything that's good here, just make it better. But the whole moral decay, I mean, character, kids don't have character and they don't have morals, they aren't gonna do it well academically, they're gonna be defeated from day one. So, yeah, go ahead.
Well, um, the books have never really been my deal, but, um, but I, I mean, I know about them, I've seen some of them, and they are pretty shocking. But, um, was the point I was gonna make.
Well, and moving off books, the First Amendment rights are being violated here.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, there's so many other things going on.
Right, I agree.
And, uh, in the school district I came from, there was so much other egregious stuff, um... To, to, you know, to try to, um, curtail that, that, um, the books were just like...
Right.
You know, not, not my deal.
That happened to be kinda where I entered, but yes, I understand.
But I do know that, uh, the other side, you know, they call us, us book banners, even though if, if we've never mentioned a book in our lives, just because we, um, you know, are coming and speaking at the school, we're a book banner. But, um, I totally disagree with that, it's like you can still go on Amazon or go to the regular library if your parent wants to take you there or whatever, but taxpayers do not need to be paying for things that are not...
Right, taxpayers should not pay.
Educational and that go against the law as far as, um...
That's right.
You know, sexual stuff.
They're violating the law, they're violating their own policy, which is unfortunate, and why? Even recently, I looked at a recent public information request of purchases, and the top... Even recently, I looked at a recent public information request of purchases and the top on the list was a rated R movie. And I'm just like, and the movie, it's really useless from my view, of course, but it's nothing I'd be spending taxpayer dollars on to educate the students.
And what grade was this for?
This was for the high school. And I'll just say, and profanity all through, the stuff the kids are getting in trouble for, it's all through there.
Yeah.
But when people say there's no CRT here also, that's another one. There's no critical race theory, but what they've done is they've removed the inspiring stories from the past about the great leaders and even current leaders like Ben Carson, which is one of my arguments. Why don't we have books about Ben Carson here in our school? And they put in literally about eighty-five percent fiction and it's paranormal, it's horror. And again, I'm not saying you can't have some of that, but when it's eighty-five percent, you've lost.
Well, part of the agenda is erasing, you know, our American heritage and history, just like all the monuments that are being torn down by these different groups.
Right, no respect, right. When you ask students who's who and they don't know who they are, there's a problem. And then their reading skills aren't very high here and neither are their math. So those are things that really ought to be more, give more attention to. But if the conduct is so bad from the top down and they're literally in your face about violating First Amendment speech rights or even right to petition your government, that's a big problem. And when, about three times ago, when I realized they were shutting people down, wouldn't let them speak, random, very random, it is that police state kind of feeling. And I'm like, okay, well, I can't go home yet. I can't stop talking about this.
I noticed that the one meeting, you know, everybody signed up to speak and then they just randomly stopped before about three or four, maybe five people and said, we're just going to move you to the end. And it was like, we were going to speak to the agenda.
Right, right. On nine eleven, they let like three or four people speak, maybe five, but there was about twenty that had signed up, maybe fifteen, somewhere between fifteen and twenty people signed up. There was a line outside the door back here and they just didn't let them speak. And some they let speak that had grievances and some who had grievances didn't get to speak. So it was, and then some matched, like the husbands and wives both wanted to speak. Their papers matched, but one got to speak, the other one didn't. So that, those kinds of things needed to change.
Yeah, there's no rhyme or reason when I was out there at the sign up because I have mostly watched this on YouTube. And because I can't come because of work usually. And I talked to the lady out there and I said, so I just want to make sure this is filled out properly. You know, I put, I agenda my, I did four or whatever on here. And she said, yes. But it's like, then you have to sit in here and wonder if they're going to say that you filled it out wrong and not let you speak.
Well, there was a lady at the last one.
After you made the effort to come up here.
Right, a mother came. She signed up and they didn't let her speak. She thought she had signed up to speak, but she didn't know there was a separate, there's a place to sign up. I'm here.
Yeah.
And there's a place to sign specifically to speak. And since she didn't know, she was brave enough to come, she had something she wanted to say. She stood up and said, please, I want to speak. I signed up, we didn't do it properly. And, and that was really devastating to her. It was about bullying and what had happened to her daughter. So it's unfortunate and if I had known, I could have shown her what to do, but, you know, she didn't know.
Right. Yeah, a lot of the problems with these school districts is that people don't know their rights. A lot of people don't know their rights and they're not used to people that know their rights.
Right.
So if you know your rights, it's like they have an automatic grudge against you because you want to.
And then they work, Smith, and he's like, you're banning. And I'll just say that my husband Jim also spoke in that, in that meeting and we both just emphasized the fact this is a grievance, which means we are deeply grieved by what's going on. And like we mentioned, the books and all that's really grievous, but the whole lack of order and then the, the out of conduct from the top down has been, has been really bad. And we have people in our city that are mocking all of us as, they're excited about the trouble and the unrest and all the turmoil and it's playing, it's playing to their agenda. And I'm talking about the lead of the Democratic Party here. She's done a lot to stir up trouble. And she's praising some of these people, like, oh, this is awesome and we can do this in Hood County, we can do it anywhere, is what she has put out. So she's very thrilled with the recent results and the things that have happened and all the lack of harmony.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you want, it's great for them if they can keep the Republicans divided.
Right, yes, yes. There's a, there's a strong thing I said to the people in that room. I said, unfortunately, there's a mask and it's looked good, but don't necessarily be good. And there's plenty of things that are good, but there's some things that are so bad that you can't just act like it's not there. And then literally throwing the wrong people under the bus is a shameful thing. It's like, it's like allowing the bullies to come back in the classroom the next day. That's a little too soon for a lot of people instead of protecting the one that was bullied. And that does seem to be what's happening from all the way down into the classroom.
I saw that one where the mother tried to talk and Harrington kept interrupting and saying, oh, you, you'll get to hear, we'll hear you in your grievance, blah, blah, blah.
Right, she talked her out of talking.
Right, and.
And if you walk up there and Harrington starts talking to you, it's a lot to get your brain wrapped around, why am I here and what am I saying?
Especially if you're not, especially if you haven't come up here and done it before. And she shouldn't be interrupting and she shouldn't have been talking her out of speaking her public comment. It doesn't matter if you have a grievance, yes, you're going to present evidence and speak about that and that, but you certainly have the right to your public comment, whatever you want to say, because maybe you want the other moms to know that, hey, I'm doing something about this.
Well, just like when I got up here, before I got to come up, she's like, well, were you going to speak on this or that? Well, I had put grievance and I had put D and I circled it and then I put public comments and I circled that. So it'd be, and then she had, like, she was confused, well, maybe she was, but by doing that.
You were making me nervous that she wasn't going to let you talk.
I thought so too. And I knew most likely she won't let me have two speeches like she did for other people in the past where you can speak on agenda issues and then you can do public comments.
We had three grievances. They only gave us ten minutes for all three grievances.
Right.
So we had to actually discuss all three grievances in ten minutes when most people are allowed ten minutes per grievance.
Right, that's how it should have been.
And we were brought in, we had ten minutes, that's it for all three. So we had to stay focused on three different grievances.
The other thing that's happening too, that Todd was trying to point out to them is he was saying, can we get this, are you recording it? Yes, they made us promise that we weren't recording, which we weren't. And then he said, well, can we get a copy of it? And they said, well, it's going to go to the AG first and we'll see if he lets you. Basically, they're saying they're going to try to protect themselves by not letting it be.
Well, it's exactly what they did last time.
Yeah, so, so, anyway. But yeah, it hasn't been pleasant, I'll just put it that way. It's unfortunate, it's sad, it needs to change.
Mike, I don't know if you want to be on Facebook. Okay, well, can I tell a little bit about what happened to you? Well, this is not with Granbury, it's with Fort Worth ISD, but he was thrown out of the meeting, dragged out by the police. It was all over the news.
Oh, wow.
Because he said the word wiener. He was, he was reading, he was reading a review of a book and it was a double entendre. It was talking about a hot dog.
Right.
But the board president heard the word wiener and just removed him and no warning. And he wasn't saying a swear word.
Right.
He was just, but, but it's fine for them to have that book all over Fort Worth ISD. Like I said, the books aren't my thing, but that's a big deal for Mike too.
Sure, sure. Well, it's important because it is, you know, not all the kids are reading, we understand. And there's a reason for that too. And if you're going to cultivate good education in children and you want them to read something educational, you can't give them smut their entire childhood. It's kind of candy.
Yeah.
You know, you can't do brain candy entirely with, with your education or you're going to end up with a mush brain, right? It's just, just like with our diet, right? I mean, we can only do so much outside the boundaries before we get a consequence. And if all of our literature is fiction or a big portion of it, or if it's nefarious and it's evil or it's like sexual content that we know damages the brain too soon, then wow, what a bad deal for the kids. And then they won't read and they're not going to read good books because it's not cultivated in them. There you go, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, it was ten minutes.
Can I, can I show you?
I think I'm about.
Sure. I don't know whether I can about it. No, you're not. Oh, yes.
So the book is flammable, right? Oh, shit.
Thankfully, that one's not here in this district. But yeah, that's a bad one. Even the lady, lady who's library here for eighteen years, she was here eighteen years. They let her, they let her go, kind of pressured her out, never got a mark on her. She's in Fort Worth now, a children, at a elementary school.
Okay.
Still doing her deeds. Nobody gives a negative on her report.
This is a book review. The book is flammable, right? It's an attack on family, it's an attack on, on church, the Catholic church. It's an introduction to homosexuality. It's an introduction of, of suicide and it's an introduction of Satanism.
It's a crucial interview because isn't the guy that's dealing with the test, isn't that a grown adult and he's a boy?
Right. Here, here it is, like, there's a scene in here, the wiener and the hot bloods and it's introduction of homosexuality.
That's terrible.
And here, more the shower scene, he's attracted to other boys and stuff like that. Homosexuality. More of the shower scene. The shower scene. And here it is, you know, he's talking to his priest, he's a Catholic, right? And he's talking to the priest and whatnot and here, here it is, I wonder if the priest, Jack Durk.
Mm-hmm.
And here he, he, you know, he's reading photographic material about. Scotch, it's not more than two. Here he is thinking about, you know, if he had special powers, that this is what he would do with the people, you know, like a rain man or shoot fire at them or some crazy stuff. And in this scene here, it's more of the same, right? Oh, yeah, here's a cutting type of scene here. He's not happy with his body type, so he imagines himself with woolen green claws and he's cutting, cutting the fat off of himself, right? This part here, I, I think it's this, this part here of like misogynist, people talking about girls and stuff like. Here, here he is, he's, he's, he goes into the church or chapel, this is a campground, I think. Goes to a chapel and he's thinking about cutting his wrists and says a prayer. And pulls the knife, goes to cut, cut his wrist and then all of a sudden he's in fire. And you think, and you're basically, basically he's saying, what is this? Is this hell? And the demon within him, and I'll explain why I say it's within him as we move on. Basically, he comes out and he shows himself to him and that's where he asks, is this hell? He basically, he says, no. What are you doing? Are you trying to, are you trying to destroy me? You seek to destroy me? And so, so basically in this conversation, he, he, he agrees with the demon and he's not going to kill himself. He says, you know, this is not hell, this is the fire within you, blah, blah, blah. You know? So basically, this demon, in my opinion, the way I interpret it, this demon didn't want his host to die. So, so, so after the deal is done, the demon re-enters into his host. So that's, and that's pretty much the end.
Well, that's a normal pre-show, but I guess it's part of the.
I probably skipped over that.
It was absolutely horrible, it was just a little boy and he's sitting there and he's all scared. There's like this, obviously a man, like, his hair on it, sitting on the bed. He's getting ready to go. Love that. You know, yeah. And, and they make some sort of joke that whoever, whoever doesn't do it into this bottle has to drink it.
In that book?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe it's that one, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's really gross.
You touched on, on literature, I want to share something with you.
Do you know that the policy EHAA says they're supposed to teach the Old and New Testament and its impact on history in our school system? So if you go to any school district, you look at Keller ISD, Granbury ISD, and you go to their policy under school board and say EHAA, and it'll tell you financial literacy, history, math, science, all that. But it also says the Old and New Testament and its impact on history, which of course they're not doing, but it's right there, they don't have to take them to an altar and try to pray with them. If they could teach them Proverbs and, you know, the, the.
I never had that in school.
Right, but it is the most influential book of all time.
You mentioned like churches and stuff like that. Just about the churches going on, you know, there's a lot of things that should be understood. Part of, part of my involvement in our social deals, it's the most politest way I could put it. I, I, I had protested drag, drag, drag shows, Storytime Hour drag shows, which are family-friendly drag shows and stuff like that. And some of, some of, more than one, they were on church grounds, right? You know, not exactly in the church, but like in a recre, like there was leased out to them and stuff like that. And that kind of, kind of shocked me, you know? But, and then we recently got a killing contract in Fort Worth, right? North Texas University, Universal Unitarian Church. I, I kinda did, did a little bit of background, well, it just doesn't look good at all. And it reminded me of this man here, what he said. This, this man was on TV when he was alive, he's, he's a bishop. This guy was the first.
A commentary?
Exposure, not, not a commentary. This was the first exposure to Catholicism to me as a young man. He was on TV, he was on early in the morning before cartoons came on. And, and this is what he said in nineteen forty-eight.
My degree in medicine comes from an East Texas junior college, but uh, the uh, if you can find somebody that has one of these inversion boards. She is right there, Monica. If you can find somebody or a center, rehab, therapy center.
That's what the. That's what the Universal Unitarian, you know, in my experience and protest.
There's something in that.
I can't, it wasn't a unitarian, it was actually a method.
That'll give it an opportunity to get itself out of there.
I think the talent.
I'm recording here because they didn't. And basically, they asked if they could be in a discussion, but they, you know, and we went behind closed doors.
This man has been in.
Oh Dennis, I'm sorry. So anyway, so I think we might be on the last one. And then we'll get to, I guess they'll, they'll tell us what they think. And then my friend just taped my kids on this morning, we didn't get our communication part right. They're like, shit, I can't, I can't. They finally got together, but we worked out. Thank you, they really wanted to be here, they're like, no, you can't. They did on the other day, and they've been here, we haven't had any, or had any. Well, today they had classes. They are, they've learned a lot, they sometimes, sometimes we don't bring them, but they have learned a lot, it's been a deep dive and the civics and. Um, and I was so sad about the election, I, I did not.
I lived around too, but not as pronounced as you do, but I've had a knee replacement, so.
Well, that's where I'm not.
Are you giving him good advice about this thing?
That's where I'm not wanting to go. He, he needs to get an inversion board and hang himself upside.
Okay, I don't, for that. Oh my God, well, and if you tell all your boys to quickly show up, you'll love to get a raise. And, but the thing is, they actually, it was about, it's a five thousand and four. Let's just say only three thousand. Those three should have had at least.
Is that still coming up?
A friend and a family member, but we don't, they didn't have that. So I don't think they have the support they think. It's still a close call. The bond is still at your breath. This morning I heard it's three against, three votes against. If anyone came in, we'll see, we'll come down to. But if you incentivize the people to come out to vote for the race, they're gonna vote. And that, that is, that was good, to do that way. I knew it was happening, but I didn't, I know. Right, if I knew it, I, in the future, I'd be even more sort of aggressive about trying to get out the vote. Um, cause it didn't dawn on me how hard they were gonna push to get their people to come out and vote. But it makes sense if you can, and if, you know, we were talking, my husband and I, that if we had a daughter or a son-in-law that was a teacher, we'd all probably go vote for them to get a raise.
He said the same thing.
Unless we had the value to say, that's not fair, it's not a merit raise. And it's not coming from the money they already have, it's taking from other people. And a lot of people have stagnant income, it's not increasing. And so now they just had another dip. From them, and no fault. You know, so.
That's not gonna make.
Well, and I think it was also Dr. Hearn's super strong intent to get the bond passed. We'll have a raise over here and get you out for a raise, and I'll vote for the bond while you're there. And the two together made for a pretty good tactic, you know, plan. So. Yes, yes. Well, hopefully, this, this is good because it makes them sit down with the public, fix grieving. It gets it in writing, so it's a public record, and it forces them to sit and talk with you. Whereas, well, actually, they didn't talk with you, they only listened. Well, what happened was, we filed three grievances, we filed one against the Orem Brothers, but it's improper conduct. Multiple times he sent things that are improper, and then dropped her comments, and also against the NJS Center, and Karen Lowry. And so we got community, all that in turn to then. But they gave us ten minutes, only one, ten minutes. For everyone else that has a grievance, you get ten minutes. But if you do two grievances, then you get ten minutes. Right, you get ten minutes. According to this form. No, that's when you speak at the podium. So this time they did let the speaker speak, except for one man, and he, on his form, he did not write his address, he said it's on file, because they do have all his details. So they said, you didn't fill out the form properly, so you can't speak. Well, that's the third time they've stopped him from speaking with a mic over his form. And he's trying to make a statement, but he doesn't have to put his address out to the public. But that's what we had to do, when I first came, you had to say your name, you had to say your address, which is quite risky, given that there's some people who are.
Well, that did something to him, yeah. His iris is long.
So, um, but, if we, so then, in, in one meeting, they allowed people that know Dr. Hearn to speak on. They allowed them to speak on the agenda, and then they let them come back again and speak on public comments. But now they won't let any of us do that, so. Or if you have two agenda items that you would like to say a comment on, you have to give it all in a short little timeframe. You can't speak to each one, but to understand, because who would want some citizen coming in and talking for twenty minutes, you know? You wouldn't want that. So I know they have some things they have to do, but uh, it's gotten pretty ugly. No, I didn't, I didn't even really warn people, and with the election and all, see, what happened was, we filed these grievances probably six or eight weeks ago. Right, yeah. And that's part of the truth. That's us.
I didn't get to say, so that's all right.
Let me go back.
No, 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 he's supposed to.
But seven hundred and ninety is tough, and getting public to show that both houses tough, but ten, seventy-nine. Last time, maybe we'll be on nine eleven. This is eleven. Right, right. I know Marilyn Black has children, I have children, and some of the people still have, people are trying to get moved around, but. And, well, there's a post to it, if you file a grievance, you're supposed to find a mutual time that both of you can make it. But that's not how they do it. This is when you'll be here. And there is no, last time on nine eleven, several people said, please, can we not leave on that day? And they wouldn't budge. So it actually says such a mutual agreement. Right. It was cool, yeah.
That was the first one I experienced.
See, and that's the one that they didn't record, so I recorded it, and that's basically what I'm doing now, because they're choosing not to record them.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah. I know. I don't know, have you seen that, I haven't seen, there's a police state moving out, it's, I think it's either PragerU or someone else is sharing it, and I'm like, oh, I probably have to watch that. And it's kind of the police. Oh, that's, she's so sane for the city, I, we are not in the city either, but we will sweep the city council. Well, what it is, is Granbury's trying to make themselves look very small. And so they, they called only the city limits their city, but yet we know that all of us have Granbury addresses. So it's a perception, it's a word smithing kind of thing for being a small town. But, like, we can vote, it's a council, but we got between Charles Beard, which is a Christian, he's a moral man, he's a veteran. Well, he probably got the presidency. You know, President? And he's the one who's on the agenda. So even if he hadn't gone to jail.
And he's probably.
Absolutely. But why, I say, if he is posting a message that he's been in a relationship for ten years, as in all, even if it's with a woman, why would you endorse him? Is that what, like, if you let officially find out, I've been in a dangerous relationship for five, ten years, whatever, we all come out of it with. So why would you upfront endorse him, knowing you've got a Christian in your heart? Well, they didn't take him to win, they just wanted three-way votes. They didn't know him, but we'll get to know him. Anyway, so, and now we have a runoff. There'll be a runoff because the other man, the man skip, who just showed up in Granbury all of a sudden, was the new guy. And he got four hundred percent of votes, so. Right, and I haven't until now, just so you know, just barely learned. Yes, and that's good, that's so good. And it's so important because many of these people are going to her, they're finding Christian in you.
No, sir.
Todd's still in there, and they still have to come out and vote. Oh yeah, I know what they got to say. No merit.
Yes.
No merit, no merit, second, past, no merit.
Yeah, it's true, that's true. Well, they've been famous for getting people on great places too, because when, when all of the whole book thing happened, I uh, I either documented it books or other people did. And we gave it to them, we put an email to all of them, they didn't respond, and they, they had direct quotes. And they had word counts, you could see how many times certain words have been used in a book, and say, hey, what do you think? They didn't, Dr. Hearn said, we haven't done any things, because you have a formal complaint, formal challenge. So, okay, so you have to formal challenge. Every formal challenge means you have to read the book entirely, you have to promise you're gonna have it. I'm telling you, that was bad. It's a seven hundred pages, yes. I've heard some things about it. Still, he could have been, he could have been something further, because even on his voting, would have been way more people have even loved better people. And respected, but he's lost all that. So. And then these people send by him. Because they can give him the details too, they know what's in there. Yeah, yeah.
And I just.
Yesterday, a friend of mine, Uncle Quentin, she was someone in the fort, they had a good post for, and my name was part of it. And it was, it was saying drag coins were better than drugs. But they didn't want it to go on, and next thing, they're reporting to the post, they're like, two of them. My grandmother says my grandchildren are safer with drag coins, they're a great choice. But I wasn't ever in my reference anywhere, I was never convicted of counts. But they, they tried to link me, and so I was, and, and let's say I had been, I was deceived, and I was deceived. You know, if I were, if you're in a situation like that, I would be deceived. But that's what they do. And I guess they're gonna share it with people, so they can try to, or they will, they say. I know, I'm just like, wow. Is this the last one?
Yeah, that's it. Really anxious to hear what the decisions are.
I know, I think it's gonna be no merit, is that what Billy said last time? Everything was no merit?
Wow, wow, wow.
What was your grievance?
Well, it's, it's his grievance, I, I was only allowed to listen.
Oh.
Todd, do you wanna speak?
Do you wanna say what your grievance was?
You wanna sit down and do it?
Oh, she, she would just wants to kind of capture what just happened.
Um, I went over my grievance, but basically, since this is, since subsequent to my original grievance, they've also blocked me three other, two other times.
Right.
So I, I brought that up, and then I also brought up the, the fact that what they're doing is absolutely illegal. I gave them three uh AG opinions on it. And I gave them a, a, a letter that demands that they preserve electronic evidence and all evidence uh going forward. And um, and I cited, um, I cited all the laws that uh, well, there's more than, there was more, but I cited the majority of the laws that are pertinent to this. And told them that they were out of order, and uh, that they were violating um, my First Amendment and the public's First Amendment rights to uh, to, 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 to address the government. Agreed to the government, and the First Amendment right to speak uh to their government. And um, basically, that's what I did, and I al, um.
And they don't really.
Gave them three AG opinions.
Three AG opinions, and they don't really talk with you, they just listen to you and then you leave, right? And they deliberate afterwards, and then they come out here and tell us.
Courtney Gore uh asked for um, one of the, for um, Melanie's notes. And uh, Ms. Hearn said, no, she doesn't have to give you those, we, we don't share notes, we don't share notes. So that was what's going on when I left, so that's all I know.
Oh, okay.
Courtney wants to have.
Melanie's notes.
Somebody else's homework, she wants to copy someone else's.
Oh goodness, okay.
Good school board member.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's Benedict Gore. I told them, and that uh, they were on notice, because I've just notified them what they're violating, what they're doing. Um, here's the AG's opinions, here's the law.
Right.
Um, and um, I told them that, you know, uh, what they're doing is wrong because um, we uh, this whole grievance process, we have options, so we can appeal at every level. And at level three, our option is to appeal to the TEA or go to a court and bring a lawsuit. And they're hold, they're trying to withhold information from these hearings. They moved them all, they, they skipped all the evidentiary stages, they moved them all to this one hearing, and then he admitted to me, Dr. Glenn admitted to me, that after this, they intend to have their attorney, pay the attorney, to write a letter to the AG uh saying, we held, this was an executive session, so we don't have to release the recordings.
The recordings, right.
But it doesn't matter, because if, if we appeal to TEA, TEA has an absolute authority to, to, to get the copy of this report, and they will, so they're just delaying the inevitable.
I hope they actually recorded it, and don't say, oh, we lost it.
Yeah, there, there'll be an eighteen-minute gap.
So um, you don't need to face that at me, I just wanted to say, I was dying to say something in there, but I couldn't say anything.
Cause you were with us.
I have a lot to get out.
They, they repeatedly said that you didn't fill your form out properly um, to speak. Which is why he, he's had his First Amendment violated three times in a row now.
I'm on the agenda.
But I think I even said it on this livestream already, that even TASB guidance, the Texas Association of School Board guidance, says that you may ask for a, a speaker's address, but you, it's absolutely voluntary and not required. So they, I mean, they already have his address, it's already on record, he was on the agenda to speak. Yeah. But they said he couldn't speak because he didn't fill out the form correctly. Because he said it was.
He said it was on file, yeah.
And um, even TASB, who hates parents and taxpayers, um, and they just wanna protect the misdeeds of school boards. Even they say, you can ask, but it's not, it's voluntary.
It's common sense not to have to proclaim your address to the, to the world.
And I, I kind of said it at the end, when he was done, and they were like, no, 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 I could see Glenn's face, no. I mean, they're just straight up, they just bald-faced lied. With no problem.
My concluding thing was, you know, you're, you're investing all this energy to hide from the public.
Yeah.
And, and that's a culture that's going to have to change.
Right, it has to change.
If, if they were more transparent, the, there wouldn't be as many people mad.
That's what I said in my public comment, just follow the law.
Even when the viewpoints were disagreeable, so uh, we don't agree with Courtney Gore, or we agree with Karen Lowry. Even when that was happening, if it was transparent, we could see the process, and we wouldn't be angry that they're uh, they're forcing there.
Right.
That they're breaking the law, that's what I said in my public comment, all they need to do is follow the law, and things would go much smoother.
Sure would, there's no doubt. And the public can see.
Their job is to represent the public, it's not to block the public.
They do not see that as their job.
Oh, I know.
They, I mean, they, they really do not.
Yeah.
Their job is to rule.
And to protect their own interest, apparently, and I, I'm not exactly sure what their own interest is, being that the school board is a non-paid position, so it's about power.
Now, um, Paula uh.
McDonald?
McDonald is no longer on the board, but she's in real estate. There's a real value in sitting on that board. And being in real estate, because you're privy to all kinds of information that helps you handle.
Well, she got voted off real quick, didn't she?
She'll, she'll be back, she's.
She'll try to come back, I'm sure she will.
She's gonna run next time.
From what I understand, she um was filling a, a position that somebody left, a trustee left, and she did the rest of the, until the next election.
That was before my time.
Or they had an election, but she, no, she was unopposed.
She got voted off.
Right, and then she got voted off.
And soundly, Karen Lowry beat her big time, I mean, it was a big loss. It was a very big community out, no, we do not want Paula McDonald on the school board. And she, unfortunately, she abstained a lot, she wouldn't vote on things, and she would stir stuff up about the election books and all, but then she wouldn't do anything about it. And we're just like, okay, what just happened? Her own people came and said, you invited us here, but you're not doing anything, so now we're not, we're not gonna support that. One, in fact, one of the grievances today was by some people who had been invited here by her, and once they saw that she was not transparent and honest and all, then, and wasn't doing anything about it, they, they walked away.
You know, my original grievance was on the date where they voted on the agenda item, and then they said, oh yeah, we forgot to put comments on agenda items, so we're gonna do some of those at the end, and then they cut me completely.
Yes.
You know, I mean, and I was gonna speak to that specific thing, I'm like, there's no speaking here for the agenda before you vote, you know, this is incorrect. So what would it have hurt for them to have heard me here and tried to correct that, and accept a little bit of like, somebody flubbed up here, somebody messed up. And we're, we're holding it in a proper meeting, let's correct this, let's see how we can do it in the future, let's, let's keep it always the same, so that the public knows. But instead of that, they continue to try and. But instead of that, they continue to try and block me from, from speaking.
And then cover it up.
And, and then, in grievance, and then they want to cover it up. So I have to go through the grievance process for that. All, it could have happened in my three minutes. They could have understood, there's a mistake here. Uh, the order is speak concurrent or during the consideration of the item.
Right.
Uh, and then vote.
Well, the ironic thing is she called hi, his name last time, knowing that he had been thrown out.
I remember that.
Called you.
Yes, and where were you? Well, the saddest one was when the mother got, she signed, she said, I signed up, and they go, you didn't sign up. Well, she signed up the signing sheet. She didn't know there was a special paper that she had to sign, so then she goes, but I wanted to speak tonight, and they wouldn't let her talk. And it wouldn't have hurt, like you said, it would have been nice, just let her talk, it's okay. You can't protect what she's gonna say or not say, just let her say what she has to say. Instead, they sent her away, and she's a single mom who works, so it's like, when can she come back? It's unlikely.
Yeah, I mean, she wouldn't, if they would have, because she would have filed a grievance, she wouldn't have been able to come today?
Oh, yeah, most likely.
They need to quit worrying about being humiliated by things people say and doing what it says, stop, look and listen. Um, we, we can see, you know, that they have, and we can feel, they have contempt towards a lot of people.
You're humiliating themselves by their actions.
Yeah.
So.
I didn't have enough time, I ran out of time, but I was going to offer them some advice that I got when I was thirty-two years old. I got a job as an assistant principal at MacArthur High School in Houston, which was three thousand students.
That's.
And a lot of angry parents, uh, about all kinds of things. And my job was disciplined largely, and I made a lot of people angry with my decisions there. But my principal said to me, early on, he said, if you will just make the people believe that you have heard them, when they come to complain about something, if you will just listen and make sure that they go away feeling that they've been heard.
Right.
Well, you will not hear from the vast majority of them ever again. They'll go away and they'll go out in the community and they'll say, I really told that assistant principal off up there at MacArthur High School.
Yeah.
They got it out, they're done. These people, they, they can, they, they could have diffused so much of this stuff.
They're not clever enough, obviously.
Well, Barbara Harrington was an administrator for thirty years. Dr. Glenn has been at it almost that long. They oughta, they oughta know.
By now.
Administration one oh one.
Well, especially since, didn't he get, um, didn't he get the boot from Watson Hatch?
Yeah. Yeah, he did. I don't know about the boot, I know that they were glad to get rid of it.
They weren't glad to get rid of it.
Yeah, I know they were glad to get rid of him.
Yeah, and, and, and it would be the same situation here. He's gonna be gone the first job he can find.
Oh, yeah.
Well, um, well, in Fort Worth, ISD, when, uh, we, we were glad to get rid of Kent Scripper, uh, he was terrible. And, um, we, it was, it was money well spent that he renegotiated his contract before he left and.
He had a golden parachute, unfortunately.
Six hundred, what was it, six hundred thousand or something?
It was like a million dollars.
Almost a million dollars.
Is it for work?
It was money well spent.
Right.
To be rid of him.
Right.
To be rid of him, it was money well spent.
Except they hired somebody that was just as bad.
Except Dummer.
Well, see, that, that's why, of course, we're not gonna get this opportunity, uh, now.
Right.
Had we taken control of the board.
That would have been a different story.
The first, maybe not the first day, but first, I mean, would, would have been to reassign Dr. Glenn.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yep.
A lot of, a lot of change in, in upper management would make a big difference.
Parliamentarian. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
They need a parliamentarian. I think.
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
You don't live in the con plantation, do you know? If, if you think this is bad, you ought to see what a nine-person board, uh, if the Property Owners Association.
HOA.
I heard there was a nightmare going on there.
Oh, oh. And, and it, they operate by the seat of their pants, and they've been told by me and several other people, one, you need to adopt a set of rules, like Robert's Rules of Order for Small Businesses or something.
Yeah.
And put that in your bylaws, if that's what you're gonna follow, then you need to hire you a parliamentarian that sits at the table, maybe at the elbow of the presiding officer. Because one, one meeting I went to, they had three motions on the floor at one time. They, they took a vote, and then somebody said, which one of those were we voting on?
Yes.
And they couldn't agree on which of the three motions that they had on the floor.
Couldn't remember them?
Yeah, well.
I don't think they should have any public business, or like an HOA business or whatever, without a parliamentarian. It's super important, somebody that really knows what they're doing.
Yeah, they, you.
And that's fair, and that's gonna actually rule correctly and not, you know, be in somebody's pocket.
Doesn't the state train, doesn't the training for, for trustees include some kind of Robert's Rules training, parliamentarian?
Uh, ye, yes, there, there is quote, "school board" training. But.
Probably something.
It is laughable. And it's, it's largely in the hands of the Texas Association of School Boards.
Yeah.
Because they, they essentially are the ones that, that say that this particular training session is credible. A regional service center, a contract to provide school board training, and who's doing the training is former superintendents, uh.
There was a video out on YouTube of some Tasby, like, team of eight training.
Yes.
And they were laughing and talking about how to circumvent the law to get over on parents. And I don't know if it was like a secret recording or what, it must have been.
Well, I don't doubt that it was probably upfront.
Oh, it's on the.
I know, because they just tell you pretty much what they're gonna do, but I think they do do stuff.
Fortunately.
You didn't have to be on your very own, I think, to study Robert's Rules, you didn't study it on your own. No, no, for me. I'm gonna take it to the back and plug this in because I'm losing power.
Okay.
And you know, they, they, they blocked the floor there. You can't use those.
I wonder if they're gonna block me for my general public comment now?
They might. I'm going to do that. It's empowering.
Yes. So wrong.
She did, though, I wonder, she wasn't able to make it with the process. Don't just stood up, she said, I want this. She said, you got three, you're gonna. And her point was two moments that they, they. I do think he, I don't really want to get into that work, or just come back. It's like, I don't know.
They didn't actually.
Something about, oh, buddy.
Yeah, it's very, very. I forgot. But. They submitted a, and, you know, to the extension from that. What do they really care about? You're doing. Just then. She said first. I'm gonna show. I don't know. They, they think it's, they don't, because they have. She has. Well, I really. I remember it so. Well, he's not really possible, when he, when he.
When you're done, I got a question. I'm just leaving this off. Yeah, I was gonna ask you that. I mean, I kinda think I know. What's the purpose of behind the door, so people can't hear how great we say, all right? That's good. Okay. So what they did to Karen is publicly, if you saw a public censured Karen, I like, they had maybe three meetings there? Maybe it was more than three, but for sure, three meetings maybe here, and it's, the entire room was packed. This whole room was packed.
Obviously.
This was August twenty-third, I think, is the date.
My first one was now.
So before that, they called a meeting in a publicly censured Karen, which only means we're embarrassing her and we're going to claim that the board that we disagreed that she went to the library inappropriately.
Oh, I read that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, it's recorded, you can actually see it.
Yeah.
But what they did, they also had, I think it was about fifty people who signed up to speak. They stacked the first twenty-something of them as negative against her, listened to all the hearsay, didn't even let her speak first to tell what her story was. She told her story, they didn't publish her story, like, in writing. So you have to watch the entire board meeting, it was like three, four hours long, probably four or five hours long.
Crushed.
To find her, they did, they really did. And, and, and the hopes that she would cower down and quit. Of course, she didn't. It was just about, a censure is a nothing, and they even said so. Harrington said, this is a nothing, but it's a public shame of this person to say, you have stepped out of order. So many board members in other cities have been, have been censured multiple times by a board like this one. But what, that was my grievance today, one of my grievances was unjust censure. Mm-hmm. Should be finished soon.
Soon, hopefully.
Hopefully. And now they have to come out and speak to it.
And now.
They have to come out and decide what they decided behind closed doors with all of us. Not last time on nine eleven, Bill Wimberly just said, well, it doesn't have merit, that one doesn't have merit, no. So we'll see what he says today. Now, if he humbles himself and says, I am sorry, I shouldn't say that, that'd be amazing. You know, Jeremy Glenn says, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have talked to Mel and Graff that way, that would be amazing. And I think, you know, and maybe he could call a stop to the people who are creating t-shirts and with the ugly words on it, because that's happened. More than one designer has made a t-shirt so that.
Oh.
Children and adults.
One of the shops up in Brambury has it in the window.
Oh, yeah, I don't shop there.
I will never go in there.
Me either, me either, yeah.
There's stuff scrambling.
I know, I know.
But, uh, something else I was gonna.
We, we asked them at the beginning, could you please do this in open session? And they wouldn't.
Yeah.
So they were.
Okay. Jeremy Glenn is our past neighbor that just moved. It's, I don't know this much as a student.
Right.
But I don't bet money that it was okay. Can't help but to football field, that's what, something about weather, we think. Our, my, and his back, yeah, but we don't, that's what we don't.
Yeah.
The time is now nine twenty-nine. Uh, we are, uh, reconvening in open session. Uh, we will hear, uh, motions of each of the, um, grievances and grievances individually at this time.
Oh, you're fine.
Our first grievance, our first grievance was, um, Mr. Poe, Mr. Don Poe. Do I have a motion regarding?
Madam President.
Mr. Wimberly.
I move that we deny the grievance by Don Poe, represented by Aunt Angel, against a justice official, and deny relief.
Do I hear a second? I'll say it. Motion by Ms. Wimberly, uh, second by Ms. Gore. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Opposed? So like the record show, four or two with Ms. Townsend being absent today with this Graff and this Lowry opposed. That relief is, uh, that grievance is denied and relief is. Mark, Ms. Mark Lowry. Your, her motion regarding the, um, Ms. Lowry's, um, grievance.
Madam President, I move that we deny, deny, we've denied the grievance. She's. All the relief requests.
Which one do you want?
I'll say it.
I have a motion by Ms. Gore, second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Opposed, same sign, like the record show, vote four or two with Ms. Townsend absent today with this, this, uh, Graff and this Lowry opposed. We will go to the next one, uh, Craig and Denise Mayberry. Do I have a motion regarding this?
Uh, Madam President, I move that we deny the grievance and deny the relief as requested by, uh, from the grievance by Craig and Denise Mayberry.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I show a motion by, uh, Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Wimberly, all in favor? Opposed, same sign, like the record show, vote four or two with this Graff and this Lowry, um, ready to go. Uh, with the Browns, we have three different grievances, uh. The first one was.
It's a coverall motion.
The first one was, uh, the grievance, and I vote in the order is the grievance with, um... That, that, uh, against Dr. Gore about answering, uh, Ms. Mrs. Graff. Do I have a motion regarding that?
We're doing all three separately.
Okay, well, you can go all three together, all three separately. I want to play your board.
I move that we do all three together.
Okay, I have a motion to do all three together. I'll do a second.
I'll second.
A motion by, uh, Ms. Gore to do all three of them together, uh, second by Mr. Moore, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, same sign? The record show, four zero, four two, um, that we will do them all three together. Uh, do I have a motion regarding the disposition of, um, Jim and Monica Brown's grievances? Mr. Wimberly.
I move that we deny all breaches in relief by, uh, Jim and Monica Brown against JST official.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Motion by Mr. Wimberly.
So he just voted against his, um, grievance.
All in favor, show of hands? Opposed, same sign? Let the record show, four two, um, that that is denied, which is Lowry, Ms. um, Graff voting no. Uh, the grievance, uh, by Mr. Goberry.
Madam President, I move that we deny all relief requested regarding Mr. Goberry's grievance.
How about? Motion by Ms. Gore, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wimberly. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Close, same sign? Let the record show, four two with Ms. Graff, Ms. Lowry voting no. Uh, grievance filed by Mr. Todd Daniel.
Madam President.
Mr. Wimberly.
I move that we deny the grievance on relief filed by Todd Daniel against the JST official.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Wimberly, a second by Mr. Moore. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Opposed, same sign? Let the record show, four two, that, um, that grievance has, has been denied. Uh, we had all the public comments because, uh, there were only four, we had those at the beginning of the meeting, so at this point, it is...
I signed up for the second. I signed up for the second one on number seven.
And I was skipping the first.
Public comments on non-agenda items, I signed up for that. Pretty sure other people did too.
Mm-hmm, I did too.
Forget Mr. Daniels.
Uh, did, did, I, I apologize, did I not give you your three minutes at the beginning of the meeting?
There's two, I, there's two parts on here, public comments on agenda items and then public comments on non-agenda items. I signed up for both.
We'll give you one minute. Thank you.
Um, I've been looking, this is not on, is it on? Is that on? Okay. Um, I've been looking at the agendas when they come out, you know, seventy-two hours ahead of each meeting, and it's the most non-transparent agenda I've ever seen for any school board. Um, I came from a different school district where we'd have three and four hundred page agendas with all of that, though, how much it cost, who ordered it, you know, I mean, just where we could actually do research on what was being voted on. And I have not seen anything but a two-page agenda, maybe three, but it's, it's top line, it, you don't know anything. And, um, yeah, I guess I could try to call up to the school and get somebody to try to, you know, try to get somebody to answer my question. But this is something that should just be out of the public. The public should know so they can come and speak on the, on what's going on in the school. Like, why are you hiding it? Um, that should be on your board book. You pay for that through TASB. And I also wanna say that TASB guidance specifically says that you may request somebody's address, but it's not required. It's voluntary.
Thank you. That being, uh, the end of our, uh, public comments at this time, um, nine thirty-seven, this meeting is adjourned.
I signed up for both too, and circled it, but, but, I know, I know, I'm not, I'm not gonna do it. A minute, yes. And Billy Wimberly just voted on his own grievance.
I can't even say my name, a minute.
Well, I've got a lot in there.